If I can have your attention, we're calling this meeting Uvalde County Commissioners' Court for Monday, November 25th, session. I should stand and join in support of prayer. Dear Lord, as we enter this Thanksgiving week, we want to especially thank you for the blessings that you give each of us. We thank you for the strength and the energy that sustains us. We thank you for the wisdom to guide us, and we thank you for the peace that fills us. Lord, we want to thank you for your love. Please continue to bless us and our families, and God, please bless the state. Under God, one and invisible. Okay, well, move to item number two, and that's citizens' communication. Diana Carew?
Good morning, Diana Olvedo Carew.
Good morning.
I come before the Commissioners' Court this morning, and I want to acknowledge that after the last meeting, Judge Mitchell did reach out to me and asked me to come in and visit with him so that he could try to answer some of the questions that I posed to the court. We spent a good hour, maybe hour and a half, going over a number of things. Judge Mitchell did let me know of all the wonderful things that have happened in Uvalde County since he has been in office. Lots of good things that obviously have helped the community. We also talked a little bit about the budget, the revenue. My understanding from that meeting, Judge Mitchell let me know that in addition to the property tax dollars that the county receives, the court also uses some of those revenues to actually make it work because you don't get enough, according to Judge Mitchell's conversation with me, with just the property taxes. So, I myself have not verified that information, but that is what I was told. And I appreciate the opportunity to meet with Judge Mitchell. I did, at that same time in our conversations, talk to Judge Mitchell about the emergency service district and the need that the fire services are telling this community that they need. I have no doubt that they have need for funds to properly operate, to get the equipment they need. I don't know about salaries, really. I know there's three full-time firemen right now that are paid through the city of Uvalde. But what I do know is that the residents of Uvalde County cannot bear more property taxes. Our new state representative ran on the promise, one of them, that he would not burden this community with more property taxes. An ESD would be more property taxes. I strongly believe, as I said prior to today, and I'll say again, and will say into the future, that the money that we need to fund fire services can be found right here in Uvalde County. I myself would ask the court to consider, and I know this is not a popular suggestion, but I do believe it would be a very good thing for the county to implement, is the elimination of your Elections Administration Office. Move that into either the county clerk or the tax assessor's office. Dedicate one full-time person to take care of the responsibilities of that work. You have two years between elections, more than enough time for someone to adequately look at the voter rolls and whatever else is necessary to prepare for elections each year.
Fifteen seconds.
I would also say that the health services tax, the half-cent sales tax, the money that you currently give to Uvalde Memorial Hospital is unnecessary, no longer needed, and could be dedicated to fire services. I will be coming back to you over and over again to ask for that to happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the Honorable Speaker that was signed up for this morning. We'll move to item number three, and that's consider an act upon approval of minutes. You have before you the minutes of November 12th and November 15th for consideration. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I make a motion to approve your minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion? Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is consider an act upon a public hearing applying for the successful status to the countywide polling program. The Texas Election Code requires the county to conduct a public hearing following an election in which the countywide polling program was utilized. It allows for the public to comment regarding that program. We'll open the hearing at 10:11, and Diane Carew has signed up to speak to that.
Good morning again, Diana Olvedo Carew. As you know, when this issue was brought before the court, I myself was kind of in the middle, on the fence. It seems like if we consolidate polling places, it can be useful. I know that over the years, people have gone to a polling place on Election Day, and it's not where they vote. They walk away, very likely not voting at all, because one more inconvenience for them and the day not interested. I was very surprised and a little bit disappointed that the polling places that were selected within the city of Uvalde area were not announced, to my knowledge, until pretty much right before the election. The sites that were selected were surprising to me. The Fairplex, and I wasn't here at the last meeting when you canvassed the election votes, but I did listen to the videotape. And one of the things that was said by the Elections Administrator is that there's a swath of people that live on that side of the county that have to go all the way across town to vote at the Community Health Center. Well, I would then counter that there are many people that live at the Uvalde Estates that would then have to travel across town to vote at the Fairplex. So, you know, it's about the same challenge. I think the fact that the Community Health Center was not selected, and I did hear the comments that it may not be the most suitable place any longer, I don't know. It might be something that you would look at more closely because that is a location that services a large population of our Hispanic voters, the elderly people of less resources, that need a more convenient place for them to access their voting rights. And so, that was very surprising. I understand the turnout there was very, very low, and so I don't know that that's the most feasible best location for a polling place. So, I guess I'd like to see the data. How many people, I know people had to have voted outside of their precinct because you closed three or four of them, but how many people that had a place where they normally vote, voted somewhere else as a result of this countywide polling? Is it the best option for Uvalde County? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it was not very prudent of the court to make that decision so close to an election. And now that you have the opportunity before the next one, if you, as a Commissioners' Court, will make the decisions about how you move forward and don't leave it to a few people that are not elected by the people.
This is a public hearing. Are there any others who would like to address this issue? Yes, ma'am, we have three minutes.
Good morning, Rhonda V. Hill, Uvalde County resident. Under the Constitution, this countywide voting is illegal, state and federally, and it is not helping the Democrats. This countywide voting took away a lot of the Democrat voting centers, and we had a lot of complaints about Democrats not being able to vote because they had no idea where to go. So, not only are you hurting people from voting, you're keeping people from voting because they have no clue where to go. There's no communication with the community on where they need to go, in the newspaper, online. There's no communication with the community. Just like the ESD did not pass, our community doesn't know about countywide voting. None of us have gone door-to-door and talked to the community and told them about countywide voting. Apparently, you know, we might have to go door-to-door, and we have a committee set up to do this with Democrats and Republicans, to go door-to-door, since it's not in the newspaper or anywhere on social media. We are going to have to walk door-to-door to tell people about countywide voting and the voting centers that were taken away so they don't have easy access to go vote. So, we would like you to please table this and let us have the community of committee that we formed together with Democrats and Republicans to go door-to-door and make the community aware of what is happening so they aren't confused. Just like the ESD did not pass and the school tax did not pass, people were not educated on this stuff. We have to educate our community so they can understand what's happening. We can't just sneak stuff in. We have to really educate the community and let them know what's going on. I went to door-to-door in Canepa, and there's people that have been registered since 1985. Well, they haven't gotten a voter registration slip, so they thought they couldn't vote at all. Since 1985, we have lost those people's votes, two people, and that is a disgrace. Our community has no idea. They can't go vote without a voter registration card. But illegal immigrants know that they can go vote with just an ID. And we did have a person with a green card vote here under provisional, and I'd like to see the data on that as well. This is the subject because it's all voting. It's all voting. Yes, sir, it is. It's all part of the voting system, and we did have immigrant with a green card.
All right, I'm going to revoke your speaking privilege because you got away from the subject. The subject was countywide election polling places. That's all. So, you're revoked. Have a seat.
I'm glad this is on YouTube for all the world to see that you treat people like this. You can't take me out. This is my courthouse. This is my courthouse. You can't take me out of here. Thank you. Under the Constitution, this is my courthouse.
All right, we'll move on. Are there any other people who would like to discuss the countywide election polling places? Public hearing. Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing at 10:17. And we'll move to item number five, and that's consider an act upon a resolution requesting approval for successful status in the countywide polling place. Melissa?
The resolution that you have before you is a requirement of the countywide polling place program to be deemed successful by the Secretary of State's office. So, that is what is before you today.
Questions? I would just make some of that. I agree that we probably at night I can do a little better job of informing people of the changes we made, but in fairness, the countywide polling worked out perfectly, meaning that any confusion, had we had the reverse and had the old system, and we had ever changed the number of polling places we had, it would have been very difficult for people to find their new location, as it always has been when they show up to the wrong place and then quite often fail to vote because they have difficulty finding where they're supposed to. The beauty of the countywide system was wherever you showed up, you could cash your vote for your precinct conveniently without having to be redirected.
That's correct.
I would say, as far as I goes, I think the majority of the people that voted outside of their precinct likely did so at the civic center because it was the most common place for people to know that they could vote.
That was the most utilized polling location.
It appeared that most of the other polling areas, very small, seven, eight, ten, kind of single digits, a lot of them, correct?
Yeah, so the other highest utilized besides the outlying areas, so if you just talk about the city of Uvalde, the other most utilized ones were the Nutrition Center and the Herbie Hamm Activity Center. The Nutrition Center had 191 voters, and the Herbie Hamm had 151.
And for those who are concerned about the clinic, I think part of the issue there was, I can't speak with the other locations, was they've grown in their space, and it's difficult for them to forego their space from what they're doing and performing the tasks they're doing to allow an effective use for elections. The Nutrition Center, I mean, what are we talking, less than a mile? Mile and a half at most distance between the Nutrition Center and the clinic?
To the clinic?
Right, meaning that it's a pretty visible, easily accessible location.
Half a mile. Yeah, half a mile.
In a provisional ballot. And then the system worked because before we counted those ballots, we verified each and every one of theirs are within distance. In other words, trying to prove a negative, it actually proved the point that the system was sound and that it did catch any of those issues coming in.
I'd like to speak on the Fairplex. I think, yeah, it's kind of out of the way for a lot of people. We need to find another place within the city where people can go vote for their precinct. I want to agree with the Fairplex, just way out there. We need just to find a better location.
I'd love to find a public building, another public building. That'd be great.
We need to, yeah, before the next election.
Anything else on the resolution? Okay, we do have two speakers. Diana Carew?
Diana Olvedo Carew, I think that the county should consider the El Progreso Library as a polling place if the Community Health Center is no longer a viable option. I also believe strongly that the Commissioners' Court needs to look at, along with the city and the school, because everyone works together on the elections, the space that you currently use at the Civic Center is not adequate. There was jamlogs, people coming in, people going out, people coming this way, going across to get their ballot. Not at all suitable. You need bigger space with better access, better flow, and I don't know why you continue to use that little space. It is not adequate or appropriate. Was countywide polling successful? I don't know. Thank you.
Rhonda Vigil?
Under the Constitution, countywide voting violates our rights to privacy. If I vote in Utopia, and I'm the only person from Canepa that votes in Utopia, they're going to know exactly how Rhonda V. Hill voted because they're going to take my ballot to Precinct 11 to turn it in so they can report together. So, they're going to know exactly who I voted for because I'm the only one that went to vote in Utopia. So, countywide voting is against our constitutional rights. There is no privacy there whatsoever.
Those are the Honorable Speakers that have signed up. You've heard the resolution and the recommendation by the Voters Administrator. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yegel, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item number six, consider an act upon a resolution supporting a county motor fuel tax exemption. County governors are required to pay state motor fuel taxes. A bill has been filed that would exempt counties from paying state tax, which would also assist to induce the expenses to county government. The county has been requested to support the resolution. Of course, as you know, the session will begin in January, and this bill will be discussed during that session. Is there a motion to support this bill by adopting this resolution?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item number seven, consider an act upon the Texas Hill Country River Region Third Quarter Report. Haley?
Good morning. I believe y'all had the report with you, so I'll just run through it real quick. This year, our river cleanup contractors picked up over 7,000 pounds of trash in about 22 weeks of work. That doesn't include three roll-offs that we put out the week prior and post of July 4th, which each, on average, had about 5,000 pounds of trash. So, for the whole season, we're at a little over 20,000 pounds of trash picked up along the river. We will have the same contractor for next summer as well. So, the Nuaces had 5,000 picked up physically, not including the dumpsters, and then the Frio had a little over 2,000. The Sabanal River only had about 22 pounds, so definitely our cleanest of the three. We had our Frio River Trash Bash on September 14th. This year, we donated a little over $9,000 to nonprofits, majority of them being local. We had over 200 volunteers, and they picked up just a little over 1,300 pounds of trash. So, last year, we had 80 volunteers, so we definitely set that up. We had a huge group. We had awards for most trash picked up, best river cleanup picture, and the best group costume. We send out weekly in the summer, between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and then monthly outside of those dates, event calendars. So, if anyone has any events that they would like on the calendar, just make sure and submit them to us. Our social media continues to grow as well. We're offering digital marketing workshops free to the public for local businesses and locals that live in the area. We have done YouTube, email marketing, AI, Canva, Facebook, and to any type of digital marketing, we have a workshop on it. So, be sure to look at our Facebook page for those dates on classes. We had, in September, we had Texas Hotel Lodging Association come out and just give an informational on how the hotel tax is used, how local businesses can apply for grants to use it themselves, how it's collected, just kind of an overall Q&amp;A session. So, that went really well. And then last thing, we started a texting platform. It's called, we partnered with UDEX. We have a local list, and then we'll also have a tourist list once we get closer to our busy season. The local list is mainly to send out information. I sent one out when we had the last big rain. We got about five inches in Concan, and I know the Nuaces got quite a bit as well. So, I sent out a text that just let people know to watch for low river crossings and that there could be minor flooding. So, I think it worked really well. We had a good response on it. If you are not on it, let me know. You can scan this QR code and join in as well. And that is all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Diane Carew, you had a comment. Okay, you've heard the report given by the Executive Director, Haley Conrad. Questions with her? Is there a motion to accept the report?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
No second, Judge.
Commissioner Parkes, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item number eight, consider an act upon a request to replat Track 192, Unit 2 of the Uvalde Estates. Proprio owner Henry Penny is requesting that Track 192, Unit 2, be replanted to allow for seven lots front of the Uvalde Estates Drive. You have a copy of the plat in your packet. Each plat will be giving a water meter from water supply out there, and also will have the septic systems that are required. Questions?
I made contact with him, and it seems like everything's pretty much in place. So, I'm going to make a motion, Judge, if I can.
Motion by Commissioner Parkes, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yegel, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item number nine, is consider an act upon a Rookie Administration Report.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is the reports from November 7th to November 20th. We've bladed roads around the county or patching holes around the county with most brush on 309 and 355 Chaney Lane. We moved the equipment from County Road 336 to 407 and 408. We moved on to 407 to repair the flood damage washouts. Flood damage on 408, we have finished repairing it, and we're fixing the road, re-blading the road on the way out. Trash cleanup was held this past Saturday at Uvalde Estates, and monitored and super idled all work. But we hadn't done much because all we were doing was fixing washout roads, pretty much.
Questions with Dee? Is there a motion to accept this report?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second, Judge.
Commissioner Parkes, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, Dee.
Motion carries. Item number 10 is consider an act upon my item, President Davis.
You have before you two sets of amendments. As you'll notice, one set is for the year ending 9/30/24. As we begin preparation for the annual audit in January and February, generally accepted accounting principles require that the budget lines within funds be transferred to support the expenditures made. So, as you look at each of those, obviously you can see which departments they are. Something of interest, if you see, and you all know this, but if you see the word amendment, it's generally because we received extra revenue, and so I'm required to certify additional revenue that comes into the county. Again, these would have all been 9/30/24. You may see the word revenue offset, which is similar to additional revenue, but the difference being the revenue offset means the money is already in the fund that is being discussed, as in the last one, which is Health Service Sales Tax. The treasurer brought in more than was anticipated, and so she is required to distribute according to the court percentages. I recommend adoption of the amendments for the year ending 9/30/24, and this is just going to be part two. There will be two more parts.
Questions with Alice? Diane Carew?
Diana Olvedo Carew, I really don't understand how the line item budgets, or at least I can't see them, but I understand I can always go to the county clerk's office where all of these documents are part of the package that is presented to you at each meeting. The one thing I would like to ask is, was the final budget for this new year posted on the website?
Yes.
I haven't seen it yet. It's not there.
Is it on there?
I went to Truth and Taxation, and I couldn't find it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions by the court? Is there a motion to accept their recommendation?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yegel, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, there's one more set of amendments. This is in the current year, 9/30/25. This is the closeout of the ARPA fund, which we discussed a couple of months ago. These are the These are the final expenditures, and Mr. Esser will be filing the final report prior to 12/31/24. I recommend adoption of these amendments.
Questions with Alice on this? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pargas, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I want to be sure that, Lord, can you give that way?
We'll move to item number 11. Consider an Act Upon Approval of Monthly Reports. You have the opportunity to review the reports. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second, Judge.
Commissioner Pargas, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is Consider an Act Upon Paying of Bills.
I make a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is Consider an Act Upon Resolutions of Popularity. I have done my presentation this morning.
Celestino Alejandro?
Celestino Alejandro.
Felipe Ramon Senior? Felipe, Felipe Ramon Senior? And Barnaby Hernandez?
Any other? Paula Aguilar, Ms. Aguilar, Paula? Ms. Delia Muskis?
Any other? If not, that confirms this agenda. This meeting stands adjourned. Hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.